Welcome to our Wednesday session of the Kansas State Board of Education meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and note that one of our members, Ken Willard, is absent today, so there are nine members present. We will need to approve our agenda for today. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Sally Cobble, seconded by Carolyn Campbell. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Nine zero, our agenda is approved. The first item is an update on teacher leader evaluation, and Scott Myers and Bill Bagshaw will bring us that information. Hi, Scott.
Good morning. It is my pleasure to be with you again, this time around, to talk with you about, provide an update on the work wrapped around the teacher leader evaluation work in which we've been engaged for the last three years. As far as the efforts within the TLA team, this makes up a bulk of what we do, along with licensing, higher ed work, accreditation, PK-12 accreditation, dropout recovery, versatile and charter schools. Here today, we're going to talk to you about where we've been and where we're headed with the teacher leader evaluation work taking place across the state. I'll give you a little bit of background, and then Mr. Bagshaw, the Assistant Director, who really leads the teacher leader evaluation work, will walk you through point by point. If you recall, the work around KEEP had been taking place previous to the waiver opportunity. The field had come forward and said, you know, it'd be awful nice if we had something from the state, something we could utilize to be for teacher leader evaluation work. So, that good work began three years ago. And about a year into it, the waiver opportunity came along. So, back up three years ago, pilot programs have been done, had been working with a variety of states, districts from across the state. They brought in people from ETS, I believe, national organizations, to help build the concepts of KEEP around national standards, professional education for teachers, and then also for leaders, and then obviously making sure that the Kansas flair and flavor is embedded into this as well. So, two years ago, three years ago, I'm sorry, a pilot was conducted with some districts. Feedback was received. We utilized the good services of REL out of Colorado to help us with the debriefings so as to have third-party people come and listen, and so we can take the information and it's not angled in any way whatsoever. And so, we're able to take the information and then, you know, repackage it and bring it back out again. So, we had a second year of piloting, which we broadened it, we went to more schools. Then it brings us forward to this last year, where we took the third year of piloting and all districts in the state of Kansas needed to select a evaluation system that met the guidelines of the KEEP system. There are six guidelines, and we can assure you that 286 districts and the private schools from the state of Kansas who are accredited are utilizing an evaluation system that fits the six guidelines of KEEP. And we had a vetting committee made up of practitioners from the field who would come together and, as a district said, well, we want to use X, Y, Z approach, it'd be sent into us, we'd unpack it, we'd say, hey, that looks good, you're good to go. Or we'd say, you know, you need to do a little work on guideline three, let's say, and we'd send it back to them. So ultimately, we got it down to where we had 286 districts, all of our districts utilizing the system. And so, this last year, we were in full pilot across the state of Kansas. Obviously, all along, professional learning was taking place to make sure everyone understood the constituent pieces of what goes into the new vision of teacher leader evaluation. A major shift is when I was in the classroom, and as many people who've been in the field for any amount of time, the olden days of evaluation was just a met-not-met sheet, and it wasn't super substantive about instruction and/or student learning. And there are two pieces that come together now in the systems that are across the state of Kansas. We have student growth measures, which Bill will talk about in depth, and will answer questions, any and all you have, and then the instructional practices. Previous to this work, much of the work across the state of Kansas, in the nation for that matter, was focusing on the instructional practices side. And so, this is a paradigm shift, bringing it together, saying we have to look at both sides of this, okay? So, this last year, we were out on the beaten path across the state of Kansas, working with districts, working with schools, working with practitioners on what exactly is a student growth measure and how does it work. And we, and I know Brad has talked to you about this previously, in our waiver work have held strong to the concept, we want multiple student growth measures, we do not want this just tied to the state assessments. The state assessments matter, but they're one data point. And there are three possible student growth measures that would be utilized at this point in time, state assessments, commonly available assessments, MAP, AIMS Web, different off-the-shelf type, and then the area of most interest to me are the locally created. But I also will tell you that that is probably the most sophisticated, where the greatest amount of professional learning needs to take place, is assisting individuals or schools in creating and then utilizing their locally created measures. Bill, in leading up this work, did great research across the state and the nation, see what's going on with this, we ran it through the REL group again, and we've come up with six characteristics of what a test or an assessment needs to be. And I believe if it's not in our PowerPoint, we'll talk to you about it as well, because it's not as simply, I'm going to sit down and write a test and it's done. There are some quality criteria that need to be in place. So, this last year, we were doing a lot of professional learning opportunities on that across the state of Kansas. Matter of fact, today, as we speak today, as we finish our time with you today, we'll be at Highland Park, working with principals on this very concept and everything we're talking about with you today, plus a deeper dive. And you're more than welcome to be at Highland Park High School, room 111, if you'd like to be there. Yesterday, I know there are 29 administrators in attendance, I don't know how many will be there today, my guess is it'll be 52, because I know Bill and Scott are coming, probably. You're more than welcome to Highland Park High School, room 111. This school year, all evaluations in the state of Kansas are in full implementation, so we are out of pilot, we're moving forward. And so, with that, that's a little historical perspective of where we've been with this. The work began before the waiver, the waiver came along, we dealt this card into it, it's very nice that the leadership, this was before my time, but the leadership at KSDE and the board had embraced this work, because we're that much further down the highway as far as meeting the requirements of the waiver. So, with that, Mr. Bagshaw will walk you through the rest of the PowerPoint, and as you have questions, of course, feel free to ask at any point, okay?
Thanks, Scott. Good morning. It's a privilege to be here this morning to give you some information. I'm sure that in each of your districts, you've probably heard, hopefully not all the myths about evaluation systems, you know, when you do something different, there's something that's such a huge transition, there's a lot of anxiety, particularly with teachers, classroom teachers. I think we all understand that they feel pressured every time there's a change with state assessments, AYP, all those things that we knew in No Child Left Behind. So, we're very cautious to be very sensitive with educators, because the first thing that we hear, or did hear, going back two years, was now I'm going to be evaluated on how my students do. And that's not true. The purpose of this is to help all educators improve from where they currently are. And that includes, and I also want to clarify for purpose of definition, that if we say teacher, or if we say building leader, we're usually talking about those synonymously, because for the first time, building leadership is held to the same standard that we've always held teachers to as far as student achievement is concerned. And so, we found out that building leadership is a lot more motivated in learning about this and getting it right as well, which is a good thing. Do I go left or right, Scott, or up or down here? All right. Defining educator evaluation systems is pretty simple. An evaluation system, and this would include everyone in the state, would be KEEP, would be McCrell, would be E4E from Southwest Plains, Danielson, Marzano, or some evaluation system that was locally created. An evaluation system has to contain three primary components. One, there is a student growth measure piece, and that's the, that is what students do. There is the instructional practice protocols, or the old rubrics, if you will, those are the things which teachers do, and those two combined to create a final summative rating. And what was interesting in this process is we found out that not many districts in Kansas ultimately had a final summative rating. Scott mentioned that the prior practice was either you've met a series of standards, or you've met a certain number of the criteria, and at the bottom of your evaluation, you met enough of those that your contract was going to be renewed, or you weren't, or you were going to be put on some intensive supervision. The six guidelines that Scott mentioned, what we're really going to focus in on here today, because I think it's of most interest to you, especially in the time that we have, would be the third one, that we're using multiple measures, including student growth as a significant factor. And this all speaks to the, going back the last year or so, all of our work with the Department of Ed that insisted that we had some sort of a formula, or numbers, percentages, ratios, however you want to describe it, that defined significance. And we took an approach that multiple ways of showing student growth was significant. And over time, the Department of Ed has come around to our way of thinking, and we'll talk about some of the reasons why perhaps they did. But I don't want to read these to you, but these are the primary pieces of principle three with educator evaluations, that continual improvement is the issue, that you have to have at least three performance levels, you know, good, bad, better, one, two, three, unsatisfactory, proficient, exemplar, whatever descriptors you use, and you'll see a little bit of that in a few minutes as well. Using multiple measures of student growth, that all educators are evaluated on a regular basis. Now, we have statutes in Kansas that pretty much outline the timelines, right? In a first and second year teaching experience, you're going to be evaluated once in the first 60 days of each semester for two years, and that's the timeline. Your third year, you're going to be evaluated once prior to February 15th, your fourth year, once prior to February 15th, and after that, every three years. So, we're not circumventing the state statute, but the expectation here is, is that there is data collection, and there is a process of evaluation that is ongoing all the time for all teachers. Then, when a teacher hits that statutory cycle of evaluation, they already have the data, they've got some historical evidence of their practice, and then hopefully the process works a little more smoothly as they've come in cycle. Then feedback is always important. And then the other anxiety creating guideline was used to inform personnel decisions. We have asked for a waiver to put off for a year until 17, 18. In totality, these evaluation systems would be used to inform personnel decisions by the year 17, 18, and that was something that the Department of Ed was requiring us to do. And what we're saying is, is by that time, we would have a quality evaluation system where school districts would be able to use their evaluation data and be able to identify their most highly effective and effective educators, not for the purpose of renewal or non-renewal, although that is part of it, but for exposing as many of those quality educators to as many children in the district as possible. What we find out, and those of you who have large districts in your, or large school districts in your district, note that sometimes, just by happenstance or however, you end up with the inexperienced teachers, or some of the not-so-quality teachers in some school, and you have an overload of the more highly effective teachers than others. So, this is to bring attention to the fact that we need to have a more equal distribution of quality educators throughout the district for all children. Scott mentioned these, the three different areas of student growth that we're looking at are the state assessments, those commercially purchased instruments, as you mentioned, MAP, AIMS Web, DIBL, STAR, DRI, there's a whole host of growth measures that are written to be growth measures that are purchased by districts for use around the state. And then those locally created assessments are those that are created in a district. And oftentimes, those are created in the summertime by grade level teams at the elementary level, or content area teams at the secondary level, and they're meeting standards, or they're meeting all the requirements, or they're making sure that their curriculum is aligned with their assessments and those sort of things. We have a default list on our web pages, a default list of measures, so that if a district is unsure of what to use, or what some of the possibilities are for growth measures, they can go to this default list to get some ideas. One of the things that we try to be very clear about to the field is we ask them to get on this default list, this is not a list of a technical approval. We're not here saying that we understand the quality of all these assessments in every instance, we don't have the expertise to do that, the background to do that. But what we're saying is, this is a list of measures that districts have provided us with, that they have said, these are the ones we currently use, these are the ones we value, these are the growth measures that we feel give us the best indication of how our students, how our students are doing. And so, we've collected those, we've created them, we've put them online into categories, elementary, middle, and high school, and we're collecting those for people to use. And so, we can see those. You might remember that, going back two and a half or three years, this was originally part of the work that the Teaching in Kansas Commission II did. I think there was conversation that we didn't want to be dictatorial, if you will, and say, these are the growth measures. I know a number of you attended some of those community forums where educators were invited to come, parents were invited to come, local school board members were invited to come and have some conversation and input. And we had over 350 suggestions as a result of meeting in each of the 10 board districts around the state to make sure that we had a very good sample, and so we've worked from that point to get to where we are. In talking about evaluation systems, you know, we think sometimes we've done a great job of explaining something, maybe somebody didn't do a great job of hearing what we were saying back and forth, it's the communication thing, and so, we realize that.
I'm sorry, Bill, what?
Sometimes pictures tell a thousand words. I was really more prepared for a math analogy, you tripped me, caught me off guard. But what we have tried to do is try to present the information in such a way that educators have a true indication of priority, or focus, or order of significance and importance. And in this case, there really isn't an order of significance or importance to any part of the evaluation system. They are all important, and they all come together to come up with a final summative rating. So, what you'll see here, the orange boxes, the rectangle boxes, those are the four constructs basically in KEEP, that we've massaged a little bit so that they fit all systems. Most systems say, evaluation systems say, we've got a component that addresses student learning, we've got a component about teacher practice, and their understanding of content knowledge, their instructional practice, and so on. That's what those are. The circles would represent the three different areas of student growth measures that we talked about earlier, one being state assessment, two commercially purchased, and three, the locally developed. And so, we used to have them lined up, and people would say, well, why are state assessments more important than the commercially purchased, or why are? So, what we've tried to do is just create an image, so those were all assimilated in a way that made sense to educators beyond a misunderstanding of the priorities. And so, the way this works, if you look at the top half of this chart, the instructional practice components, which are the rectangle boxes, there will be a way that a district will decide, we're going to take all the evidence of teacher practice, that which teachers do, and we're going to come up with a summary rating based on the evidence of that. And that's going to give us an instructional practice protocol summary rating. And then at the bottom, we're going to combine all the evidence we have of student growth based on the student growth measures we've used, and we're going to come up with a summative, or a summary rating of that. And then those two areas, the summary rating for the instruction, and the summary rating for student growth, will then be combined to come up ultimately with a final summative rating. Now, the difficult part about explaining this to the field, and when we get out there and answer questions and talk about it, this is an issue, and it's, we haven't figured out the perfect way to show this in a way that it's not 50/50. Because you could sit here and say, well, you have instructional practice summary, and you have student growth summary, you have two things, that's 50/50. So, half of your final summative rating is each of those, and it's 50/50. Well, it's not. And the work is done back in the areas of these orange boxes, where you determine the quality of student growth, and how weighty that is. You determine the quality of instructional practice on the evidence, and determine how that is, and you're combining that. So, school districts will be using anything, and we don't advocate this, we don't deny that this is okay or acceptable, but a lot of districts have sort of put numbers to it. 20% is student growth, 33% is student growth, some 50%. That's a local decision. We're saying that there are other ways to do it. This is just a different, you know, in the communication, this is just something that we've used, that people get this a little bit, you've got buckets of all your information of instructional practice, the top here, and you've got your buckets of data from students, you pour those into the respective summary buckets, and that data's poured into the final summative rating bucket, and that's how you get it. So, we continually talk about how you might view the evaluation system, and how you get to that final summative rating. In defining significant, it's the change in student achievement for an individual student between two or more points in time. And this is another shift in how we look at things, because if a, if a, let's say that a high school government teacher teaches a government class that's a semester long, well, the two points in time on that student data are going to be between August and December, or January and May. A teacher in fourth grade may be looking at two points in time using a student growth measure that they give the first assessment in August, kind of as a pre, and then another, they'll get another snapshot using that assessment perhaps in November, and another one in March, so their points in time differ. Districts can also look for that historical data on two points in time that can go beyond a year. For example, if you have a teacher who isn't in cycle to be evaluated for three years because they were just evaluated, those points in time would be that evidence of their practice, and the evidence of student growth over points in time that could encompass most of those three years, because it's one of the guidelines, right, continual improvement that we talked about earlier, that you're looking, where does this teacher usually live within their quality of practice? Are they typically effective? Are they typically highly effective? Or do they struggle in some areas? And so, all of these are very important considerations in the evaluation. One of the things that we've said to districts to help also frame up their thinking is that if you look at this chart, if you meet no measures, and first of all, I need to go back, defining significant for us is that an educator for student growth only will have to show student growth in more than one way, meaning at least two of the measures selected. So, if you don't show growth in multiple ways, meaning two or more, and we recommend three, then you can't be any more efficient or effective than what this chart would display. For example, if you met zero growth measures, as you see over here on the left, you don't show any way that your students are growing, then we're considering you in the student growth realm, you're ineffective. And if you can only show one, you haven't met the test of two or more, so you're probably in that developing category showing one. Once you've met two, multiple, then you can be considered effective. And we think showing a third or more ways then might differentiate you between effective and highly effective. And if you think about the use of rubrics, you know, you think about frequently, or always, or always with, you know, I mean, there's lots of verbiage that districts will kind of use to determine this, but this is just another way that we're trying to show people that, and using student growth and instructional practice. So, this is a very, very important thing. This is difficult to read up on the big board, which is why we wanted to present you with the handouts that you have. And if you look at that, the attempt here is, again, in the spirit of communication, is to help districts understand, how do we get to a final summative rating? Using each of these areas, three particular growth measures, and at least four instructional practice areas, if we say they're good here, not so good here, how does that all come out to a final summative rating? So, we've, over time, developed this matrix. We developed it, we took it out to the field, we found there were some flaws, we brought it back, we redeveloped it, we took it back out to the field, and we feel really good about this, and all the feedback, almost all the feedback that we get from educators is this makes sense. So, without spending a lot of time on this, I think to make the point, if you look with the blue boxes, or the three growth measures at the very top, and the green boxes at the very top are the instructional practice areas, you can see what they have done. So, in the first line where I'm looking at, where it says met, 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 in the blue, that would be as if an educator had met three growth measures. So, they met, met, met. So, obviously, they're considered highly effective in that area, because they met more than two, they actually met three. And the same philosophy works going across instructional practice. Use of rubrics, an evaluator says you're highly effective in each of these four areas. So, obviously, that's a perfect score all the way across the top, that's a no-brainer, you can figure out that this teacher is highly effective. If you go to the bottom of this chart, you see just the inverse of that. They didn't meet anything, they didn't do anything very well, they're ineffective, they have no data. So, they are certainly ineffective. So, the conversation then focuses on the combinations of those in between. So, how do you balance, or how do you combine a certain number of met's and a certain number of not met's, and determine where that teacher quality is? And then there are some rules that we've created to make this work. And I think this will probably be the point of questions, if you have some. And these are the rules, this is just a larger screen that talks about the rules, that you have to meet three growth measures to be, what we would recommend anyway, highly effective, two to be effective, one would be developing. The final summative rating can only be one performance level higher than the lowest summary, so if you've got really bad data, you've got poor student data, we're not expecting that your final summative rating's going to be highly effective. That just doesn't, just doesn't wash. When both summary ratings are the same, if you're effective in data, student data, and you're effective in instructional practice, then you're probably an effective teacher. Where we have to help them a little bit is, how do you break the tie of effective and highly effective? What is that? Is that more highly effective, is it more effective? And the conversation usually stems around, well, does your district value instructional practice in that evidence more than student growth data? You've met multiple measures of student growth, if you're effective in student growth, so do you defer to the lower, or do you defer to the higher? And what is the evidence? And we think all that comes out in the conversations with teachers and administrators or evaluators after the evaluation process has taken place. This is just a little information for you, the constructs, to show you the consistency. The requirement with principle three is that teachers and building leaders are evaluated using these systems, district leaders or superintendents are not required as part of this process, although we have some that are doing it. So, we'll see that district leadership will be evaluating building leaders, building leaders will be evaluating teachers, and all of this, of course, is in your packet. The performance ratings, when we're talking about differentiated performance ratings, which is the second of the six guidelines, the requirement in the waiver is that you have at least three. I don't think we have any states that have three, and for good reason. If you have three performance ratings, the natural tendency is to kind of migrate to the middle, and everybody's okay. You know, you don't, you don't have to make any real hard, fast decisions, you can just kind of take the high ground, so to speak, and we want these to be of quality. So, with four, you've got to figure out, you know, are you to the plus side of the overall evaluation ratings, or are you to the not-so-good side? And so, these are the evaluation systems on the left, the most popularly used ones, or pretty much, oh, I guess it covers all of them, and how many performance ratings they have. You can see there KEEP has four, everyone else has four, McCrell has five. So, when we're looking at that matrix, it's easy for us to say, with KEEP, for example, you would be on the ineffective or developing side, or the other side, which would be effective or highly effective. That works for everybody except McCrell, they've got five, so after their second performance level would be that breakpoint where we would say, this teacher is okay. They are They are primarily effective. They are on the plus side. They are on the efficient side of what we would expect out of our educators. And we have to know that because we, each year, we submit an Eden, the Eden Report, which asks for, how many performance levels do all of your districts in the state of Kansas have? And how many teachers who were evaluated this year landed on each respective performance level? And how many teachers were not evaluated in cycle this year? Now, that's a raw number, there's no identifiable information, but we've got to provide that. And so, this is, this is the way we're looking at how districts will determine what their final summative rating is. As far as the number of districts in the state that are using any of these respective evaluation systems, you can see that. I do better with pictures, but the data is over there on the right as well. This is, these are the raw numbers of districts that are using each of those systems. So, McCrell is the most commonly used one with 107, KEAP has 84. I can tell you that as we've worked through some growing pains with KEAP, with our data collection system, the electronic portion with KEAP, that there are probably, I can tell you, there are at least eight, or 10, or 12 districts somewhere in that number who are saying, we weren't comfortable with KEAP in the beginning because we didn't have that electronic data system in place, and McCrell did. But everybody else charges. They charge per head, per person, size of district, they have a number of things that they use in a formula to charge. We don't, we don't have any user fees or costs for KEAP. The only fees that districts incur would be the fees associated with giving their staff time, mileage, or getting to different professional learning activities, and so on. And so, there are a lot of districts who have really gained confidence in what we're doing, and how we're doing it, and are coming to our trainings, and so I would anticipate in the next year or two, these numbers are going to move, because the expense and quality systems is also significant, and that's what we're hearing. We also have created an annual timeline for KEAP districts and non-KEAP districts, in the spirit of communicating with districts. You know, educators, particularly at the district level and the building level, they need to know what's coming. And so, we want them to know every year, or a year ahead of time, what are the big ticket items that are coming down the road, so that as you hear from us, it's not like, oh, that's something new, or I haven't heard that before. And so, we're putting the information out there ahead of time and letting them know what the expectations are. This is the dangerous part. Now, I could, you know, we spend anywhere from an entire day to two days, depending on the familiarity with evaluation systems with districts on this training. So, obviously, what you've been given here today is intended to be just an update, a snapshot, kind of the significant things that we see that have been more confusing to people relative to student growth and how we come up with the final summative rating. So, you know, I want to be very clear that, you know, there's much more information and much more detail, but I think the information that Scott and I have provided for you today will give you a pretty good, up-to-date idea of where we are, so that as there are questions, you'll kind of know where we are.
Kathy Bush has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just kind of a clarification, because I believe you said this, but in the instructional practice protocol, that summary, and then the student growth measure summary, in the waiver, there is no designation as far as the percentage of each. That's a local decision?
That's correct.
Okay, so, it is absolutely not 50/50, but locally, it's not 80/20. Locally, they can make that decision.
That's correct. If they choose to, or they can use, they could look at it like, back here.
Like the matrix?
Well, the matrix, but more like this, whether they've met two or more or not. And so, they will determine the performance level that an educator would have met with respect to student growth, perhaps using this information. If they've met zero, one, two, three, this is what we would call that.
Okay.
Without the percentage.
Okay, but it is not designated in the waiver?
Right.
No.
Bill, could you go to this slide? I think the best way to explain it is, when you look at the buckets, you've got the blue and the green, and even though that's two different summatives, if you look at all the scenarios that could play out, you could come up with, you know, multiple different ways. So, you're combining multiple data points and multiple to come up with a summary. That's why we were adamant, it's not a formula, it's not a percent, it's combining multiple data points to come up with, and it still comes down to the professional judgment of that evaluator.
I would think this matrix would be helpful to folks out in the field, because, I mean, you've got to study it a little bit, but it does explain it, so I would think it'd be helpful.
And we felt really, we felt reassured in talking to the Department of Ed for six or eight months. We were, they were over here, and we were over here on this whole issue of percentages and formulas. And once we finalized this matrix and spent some time talking to them about this matrix, then they dropped the formula, they dropped the percentage conversation and said, you know, we were ready to tell them what they needed to hear with numbers, and they go, no, 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 we don't want the numbers now, we like this. And so, we feel really good about that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sally Cobble.
Thank you, appreciate the presentation. It helped clarify some things. One of the comments that I get that they don't use KEAP because it seems to be longer or takes more time than some of the others, is that right?
You know, I don't, here's Bill talking, not just KSD.
Okay.
I don't know where they get that.
Okay.
It's not right. It's just not right. As Scott said, we literally, I mean, literally, literally, looked at every single evaluation system being used in Kansas. Now, we only had to look at McCrell one time, right? So, if 100 districts are using it, we only had to vet it one time. And U4E and Marzano and Danielson, we had to look at about 50 individual evaluation systems that districts were using. And quite frankly, what we're hearing all the time is, boy, McCrell is so this, and so long, and so wordy, and so, and you know what? We're thankful that there is a McCrell and an U4E and a Marzano out there, because at this point, there was no way we were going to be able to manage 286 districts and complete all this work for everybody all at once. Now, over time, we can absorb more, if that's the pleasure of the districts around the state. But we also, and with great help, one of our program consultants, Kiri Akwek, and she's here in the background, she's, as Scott and I and Brad have dreamt up all these visuals, she's created these. We have been really on, I think the biggest compliment we get, let me go this way, from the field, is you come out here, you ask us what we think, you go back to the drawing board, and when you come back out, we see evidence of our input. And we have streamlined the process, we have clarified the process, we have worked very diligently to have an electronic data collection system, the repository, the KEAP repository that's better than ever, which, quite frankly, was a point of contention with a lot of districts early on, and I don't blame them.
Okay.
It was very clunky, and it wasn't, but as far as being longer, as far as being more complicated, any of those conversations, you can quote me in saying that is not accurate.
Okay. On one of your slides, number six, on my page, it's on page three, but it's slide, I think, six.
Okay.
You have elementary, middle school, and high school.
Yes.
Are we not doing kindergarten and preschool?
Well, we're including kindergarten, of course, with elementary, we're not doing preschool. The requirement isn't to do preschool now. I will tell you that the practical application out there is, districts who have preschools are doing this because it's just consistent, they're just including them. But this is, this is a K through 12 initiative in now, and so, we didn't bite off any more than we needed to, so that we could do this. Also, preschool, some of the growth measures and some of the approaches are a little bit different. You know, a lot more social and emotional and stuff, and not as much of the, you know, the cognitive kind of stuff that we're really focusing on here.
That's, but it's a concern of mine that our, some of our evaluators out there do not understand preschool, and they evaluate like a first grader.
Right.
And so, I was looking what you were going to do. On page six of the, of our packet, you say that it are required for the teachers of tested grades and subjects. So, what you're, what you're telling me then is that all of the other subjects, that all of the other grade levels, they need three measures, but the state assessment will not be one of them.
Right. So, in grades three through eight, because those are the tested grades, and then twice in high school, if you are a teacher teaching a grade level or a content area where the state assessment is given, one of your growth measures needs to be the state assessment. But you only have to select one. For example, a fourth grade teacher is giving a reading and a math state assessment. They are only required to use one of those, and then perhaps two others.
Bill, are you afraid that we're going to have trouble getting teachers to accept positions in those grades that are, the state assessments are being given?
I don't, and here's why I don't. We have said, and I want to be very clear about this, that for the purpose of evaluation, that the state assessment carries no more or no less weight, whatever you decide, in showing some sort of growth over time than any of those other measures. And quite frankly, teachers always have given state assessments, they've always used that data, and in the spirit of showing student growth over between two or more points in time, one of the things that I didn't mention earlier is, until we have four years of longitudinal data, those state assessment results really don't, in a way that you can defend, accurately depict where this teacher is. But over some time, right? You give a state assessment one time, okay, could be the luck of the draw. You give it twice, all right, maybe there, maybe there's a connection there, correlation between those two or not. But the third time, right, we're starting to look at a pattern, we're starting to look that this teacher typically has his or her kids in this area. So, for that reason, I don't.
And because we don't determine how much growth has to be shown, then it doesn't matter. You know, some years you get a class that's brilliant, and then some years you get a class that isn't as brilliant, but you're just going to show growth. We don't have a percentage set on that growth.
Part of that conversation has to do with first and second-year teachers. If you have a kid right out of college that's teaching for the first year, and her students knock it out of the park on the state assessment that first year, how much credit does that person get? They haven't been there long enough, it's a comprehensive test. If that's a fifth, sixth grade test, that's over five or six years of education. You can't give that teacher all that credit for the fact that those kids scored so well. But over time, you can show that they're making that kind of a contribution. That's why having three different types of growth measures, like the commercially purchased and the lovely developed, gives you a good cross-section of more imminent or immediate student growth measures versus some more long-term ones.
Thank you.
Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great presentation.
Thank you.
No offense, but I've probably been through about 20 of these. We've rolled out-
Why did I have to come?
You really did a good job. You really did a good job. Nineteen before you, did a good job too.
Thank you.
You know, I've been in probably 19 rollouts of new evaluation tools, and there's two questions that I have. One is, how do we evaluate the evaluation? The tool itself, because that's all you have, is a tool, okay? The components of how you're measuring that, the effectiveness of that tool, or the effectiveness of the teacher, and the evaluator, typically a principal or assistant principal, or some central office person, or hopefully a teacher leader as well, how do you, how are we evaluating the effectiveness of this tool, this process, from the start, not making up the evaluation later on? We're about to kick this off. What plans do we have to evaluate, ongoing evaluation of this tool? Because I've moved, every time we had a rollout, we left somebody, you know? And typically, we left them because a new superintendent came, you know, new idea, a new board member went to some rollout, you know, for bad reasons. I think most of them lately have been for good reasons, I don't mean that, but typically they weren't because someone evaluated the system and had some hard data that made the decision. So, how are we going to find hard data to evaluate the effectiveness of this program that we're rolling out?
I think that's a great question. Here's how, here's how I believe, here's how I would answer that. First of all, from the inception, we included as quality of professionals in this area from a lot of different perspectives as we could. So, it is what it is, right? I mean, this is their work and their opinion, that's the first thing. The second thing is that this entire process is intended to be, and I know this is a little subjective, fair, but certainly transparent. So, the evaluations of educators across the district are going to be, they're going to be relative. So, what Topeka Public Schools will do in one elementary school, they better be doing it in all those schools very similarly, because you're going to have a problem if you don't. So, we spend a lot of time talking to districts about something we refer to as inter-rater agreement. So, in talking about the quality of the tool, how are we, how are we looking at the descriptors? How are we looking at the quality of instructional practice? How do we know we're looking at and seeing the same thing in the same way? Now, that doesn't answer the question about the validity of an instrument that's developed. But I think what's really at the heart of this, and it's the fifth of the six guidelines, is quality timely feedback, is as an evaluator, what are you willing to defend in ascertaining whether a person being evaluated is a quality professional or not? And what evidence do you have of that? We have already found a number of instances where something wasn't clear, or someone didn't understand something, we had to talk about that. And so, I think part of the conversation is, we have to be very specific about definition, what it is and what it looks like. And the last point about that is, assuming, and I know this isn't always the case, but assuming that evaluators are wanting to do a good job, we don't want to get in the way of them being identified, being able to identify a quality educator based on solid evidence. And we tell evaluators all the time, okay, here's what it all boils down to. If you're in a grievance, if you've got a lawsuit, if you've got a superior, it's going to come to you and say, how do you know this teacher is indeed effective to be non-renewed? Or how do you indeed know that this teacher is highly effective and you put her on a pedestal? What's your evidence of that? You better be able to defend that. So, I think that's the part. But I don't really know, other than, other than the transparency of it and the constant talking about it, I don't know in a research kind of way how we're going to really know the quality of these systems.
If I may as well, Jim. We continually maintain our relationship with national partners to maintain objectivity, if nothing else. Next Tuesday, the Center for Great Teachers and Leaders, an arm of AIR, the American Institute for Research, will be here, working with us on research. The RAL Group out of Denver, we're talking, every year we bring them in to do brief our people, our research folk, I mean, they'll still be looking, crunching hard data for us as well. Cross-teaming within the Division of Learning Services. I've engaged with Scott Smith and Zach Conrad, I believe his last name is, looking at data points, you know, building the approach so that we can back up, get all the good information Bill's talking about from our people, and objectively hand it off to other people and say, okay, spit it back out at us, tell us what you have, and from the national perspective as well. We may even be able to utilize this through eight- We may even be able to utilize this through APQC, which is the American Productivity and Quality Center, on making sure our processes are as clear and concise as possible. So I, I feel pretty good that down the road, we will continue to get that quality feedback from the national perspective partners, once again. And RAL's not paid to come and tell us what we want to hear. You know, that's a research group. I mean, they're gonna come in and say, here's where, here are your foibles, here's where you're really pretty, here are some things you might want to do. And they've done that all along, they've been very good partners for this.
Thanks, Scott.
Sounds good.
We'll give you your report later.
But you brought up one of the essential faults, I believe, in evaluation systems, is the intent by different boards, legislators, administrators, because you mentioned, this tool is also used, you know, for non-renewal. Informed personnel decisions, we're firing ya. Okay? Or informed personnel decisions, we're gonna celebrate you. Or informed personnel decisions that we're compliant and got this thing done, and boy, that was a lot of work, you know? So I'm gonna stick to the middle one. And I'm gonna say, are we really moving with this tool and this process that we're identifying? Are we really moving teachers on a career ladder to become more highly effective? I don't mind the celebration stuff, that's great, I used it, did it. And I understand the non-renewal and the draconian part of this, you know? But really, the effectiveness of this tool will probably be better measured by how we take teachers and provide them the supports and the, and the feedback and the, the skill levels, all of the stuff that we do, that they continue to grow. You know, and so how do we know, again, and I guess this is your homework assignment, how do we know this is gonna be effective? Because, you know, somebody will be sitting in this chair maybe five or eight years from now, and maybe we'll still be doing this, maybe we'll have another name, by the way, seen this one before. Now, the testing's a little different, but, you know? So I guess what I'm saying is, if this is really gonna be effective, and I'd say in four or five years, what report will we be hearing? And what expectations do we have today that this is gonna change? When I say change, I don't mean in a, that it's ineffective. How are we making effective teachers more effective? You know, because that's the biggest group. Don't worry about, not worried about the firing and the celebration people. How do we move where, which means ultimately that kids, students, are achieving at a higher level?
I might add, the process we will most likely follow is like we did with MTSS. We used the best research to build it, and, and keep, and the six guideline principles all, all started with national ETS helping, we, we had a group of districts. So it was built based on good research on quality evaluation instruments. From the very beginning, it was, and we were having this conversation earlier, I had a superintendent said, it won't make a difference unless they get rid of tenure. And I said, that was never the intention of a good evaluation instrument. The number one purpose of it is to help good educators become better. But with what we did with MTSS, about three to four years into it, then we hired a research, and they're just finalizing it, of then to be able to go out, work with districts, evaluate, does MTSS make a difference? And, and that's something that, and I've got written down here, in a few years, we will then have to say, all right, is what we put in place that was built on best practice and research, is it? And that's going to take some third party that knows what they're doing, come in and spend some time in Kansas districts and looking at all of our data, to say, did we have teachers that became more effective? Did, did it change the conversation on how we evaluate and all that? So yes, we will have to, because that's the only way we'll make it better, or know if we were on the right track.
Well, I can tell you that if you stand in front of your faculty, and your parents, and your students, and say, we're gonna raise test scores, everyone will applaud, and we're gonna do it by X, Y, and Z. But you don't, you don't put out hard numbers and facts and information that's, that's very definable. We're going to improve, you know, AYP, what used to be AYP, but AMOs today, we're gonna improve this way. I, I just don't think it, I think it's, it's, it's used to fire people, to scare people, it's used to celebrate people, but we've never really focused on how we're going to really change, you know, instruction and really improve instruction, not for people who are failures, but for people who are, are generally committed to their profession and generally committed to the success of their kids. You know, that's what I'm looking for. And if we can't articulate those things that we expect to change as behaviors, we're just gonna be into the compliant mode really fast, and into the, the, looking for our new evaluation system in four years. I just think we should have some very definitive expectations of what this is going to do, you know, and, and how it can be used to do that. If we just say, we, we wanna grow more apples, but we don't know what we need to do for the trees, that's, it's really nice, hope it rains.
Good point. There are, there are a couple of things in, in this area that, that we are doing. One is just a matter of fact that evaluation systems don't have a middle ground, so we can hopefully eliminate the fact that everybody just, you're okay, everybody's in the middle. And then we will be collecting statewide, for every building, all of the final summative ratings that we're giving to teachers, so we can see, where's the bubble? Is everybody halo effect and highly effective, are they all right here? So we can take a look at that, and then dig into that a little deeper and make some inferences about what's happening.
Now, that's what I'm looking for.
Right, and we've got that-
And more than that. If you're gonna have test scores up there, what does it mean?
And, and we will look at that student growth data relative to the final summative rating of teachers. So if you see low growth, high ratings of teachers, something's out of whack, or vice versa, right? And then the other thing is that we did is this last year, we had McCrell, a different branch of McCrell, develop surveys for us. You know, it, it was Brad's initiative to say, we need to have a way to find out some information that we don't have now, wouldn't it be great if we could provide the districts a tool, in this case, it became a survey, a perspective survey, about these very things? And so we have, and it's, they're, they're very good, and I'd be glad to share them with you. And we've piloted them, and we've got great response from the field. We have surveys for students about their perceptions of the quality of the teaching they're receiving. We have another survey that is for teachers about the quality of support from their administrators. And we have another one for parents about the quality of the services their districts are providing. Now, the beautiful thing about these surveys is they're short, they're like thirty questions, and they're in categories of about five questions, and they're pretty simple. So we know that that will be another bit of evidence, and we can give those electronically, and word has kind of spread, we had no takers last year to pilot these, because we've been piloting people to death. And after we gave those to about fourteen or fifteen districts, and we talked about them, we have dozens of districts who want those, because it kind of gives another shot of, we say our teachers are doing great, but our kids aren't saying that teachers understand them, teachers don't care about them, teachers don't, or they do, right? And the surveys are lined out from grade three through five, six through eight in high school. So the same questions asked a different way. You might ask an upper level kid about the quality of the instruction they're getting, and the, at the third grade level, the question might be, my teacher explains things in a way I can understand. So it's, it's just another way, but there's probably a real good answer to your question, Jim, but we're, we're looking at a number of ways to take a look and make decisions about how is this going?
Brad, I'd like to be able to get a response from you and your team on what we're talking about here. Letting the field know how we're going to evaluate the evaluation. You know, so there's real expectations beyond compliance. And it was good presentation, it's a good program, but, you know, but let's see if we have some data that says it's a good program. And if it meets our expectations. Thank you.
And Jim, you have expressed some of my concern too, so I'm not going to elaborate on that, but I have some of the same concerns you do. Deana Horst.
One of my questions wasn't quite as in-depth as, as Jim's, but that was one of my questions of how we were going to make sure that this was actually a valid process. And having served for many years as an art teacher, and knowing that there are concerns within the fine arts folks that I've talked to about how this will work for them, could you kind of walk through your vision of, of how that would work? Because they don't have a test, and they're concerned, they're going to be held responsible for test scores that they've had no real input into. So could you elaborate on how this affects those, those, well, it would affect PE teachers probably as well, but those who are not being tested, that their students aren't part of the-
Thank you for that question.
Are testing.
What I heard, part of your question is an apprehension about being held accountable for assessments I don't have any part in. That's a, that's one of the myths we talk about. If you don't teach a subject that is tested, then there's no expectation that you're gonna be held to any consequence, nor would you get any credit for that assessment. Now, there are districts who are figuring out ways to do that by choice, but in your, in your example of an art teacher, here's the irony in this. What we originally thought were the most difficult areas to assess using growth measures, art, PE, music, band, those kind of things, those are all student performance areas. They're, they're the experts in this, they're really all the way out there. They're, they're, they're so good at this already, they don't even know how they relate to this, because they're off the charts. And they have national standards, they have rubrics, they have performance standards, they're using-
That's true.
They're using portfolios, they're using pre-post test.
We've used those for a long, long time.
And, and our mantra has been, don't, don't reinvent the wheel, don't go out and spend money, don't try to recreate, what are you already doing? Right? I mean, we, we wanna make an assumption, and hope it's accurate, you're already doing things to determine how your students are growing. The people who are a little upset about this are the ones who weren't doing that that much, and they've got something to do. But the people that you'll be talking about, you know, those are the, those are the easy groups to talk to, because they're like this, when we go in there and talk to them, and we get down, they're like, hey, we've been doing that forever, I'm good to go, I got this. You know, that's kind of, and, and it's very nice to, to hear, see them, because it tells us that perhaps we're on the right track, as we're talking about, how do you determine? And we've learned so much about that. And if you go to the webpages on the website, you'll see on those default lists in different areas, you'll see what those, what those are. It's really our challenge now is just continually getting that information out there, so that those, those teachers of those districts who haven't spent the time on it, or who haven't been involved in the trainings and some of those things, don't know that yet.
And I think that have been a member of the Kansas Art Education Association Board, that's something that gets brought up regularly, is it's not that I can meet the, the three evaluation, that I can't find three things for, of my students to show an administrator. But it's the concern about the tests. And, and I know that we all teach a little bit of reading, we all teach a little bit of math within, believe it or not, art. The arts do have components within both of those. But the concern is, how are they going to take, hold me responsible for the entire gamut?
And one of them is-
And so that, I think, is what I'm asking for, is more of an assurance that administrators know that the intent was not for them to be held responsible.
Absolutely. And if you look at, and if you look at this, the reason why we recreated this chart this way was because you don't, you don't need one of each of the three growth measure categories, you don't need a state assessment, and a commercially purchased, and a locally developed. You need some combination of those, and you wouldn't have to include any one of them. It could be three commercially developed, it could be three local performance, it could be state, you know, it could be any combination. And so where the state assessment is relevant, you need to use it. Where it's not, it's a local decision. Because in some cases, for example, what we hear from K one and two is, we want to share in the aggregate scores, the test scores on the third and fourth grade assessments, because we've done more to teach that assessment in K one and two than the third grade teacher who's assessing it.
They probably have.
And so, and obviously, if you've got a quality school with, with good scores, and you've got a great staff and all, why wouldn't you? Right? Pick the low-hanging fruit, so to speak.
Okay, thank you. And we'll take one last question, Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First the number, four hundred seventy-nine million, one thousand six hundred. Does that mean anything to anybody here? Four seven nine, zero zero one, six zero zero.
I gotta no.
Okay. What if I said twelve factorial? Does that mean anything? Do you know the factorial function? Okay. If you multiply the positive integers one through twelve, you get four hundred seventy-nine million, one thousand six hundred. That would be the number of ways, I'll get rid of Ken's chair, because he's not here. That's the number of ways that the twelve of us can fill these chairs, that's how many different seating arrangements there would be. Twelve factorial. So I, I look at the complexity of systems as an engineer, thinking, there's a lot of complexity here. And I, I wanna echo some of the things that Jim was saying, you know, he's seen things rolled out over the years with his experience being a manager in these systems. And he's had to deal with all sorts of complexity and boil it down to something that people can use. So I think that's really our charge here, is to try to build something that people can take and use. But I also want to just mention, since this is not an election year for me, that it seems to me that it's true that you don't necessarily have to go to teachers' college to be a great teacher. I think that's true. In fact, I know it's true. But it's my opinion that teaching is not union work, and I want to share this with you, I've thought about this in the last few days. Some of the best teaching preparation I've ever done has been in the shower. Some of the best reflections I've ever done on my classroom work has been, as I'm going to bed, those last thoughts that you have before sleep takes over, you play those tapes from the day, you know, what did I do, what did I, what could I have done better? You know, I think most good teachers do that. And so I think this is pointing us in the direction of continuous process improvement, kind of the W. Edwards Deming stuff that was popular a couple decades ago, Six Sigma, making things better as much as we can. And I think it's pointing us away from the- And I think it's pointing us away from the traditional perspective that teaching is union work, that we really are civil servants, working in civil service. I think this is an attempt to sort of take us away from that, and I want to applaud that part of it. The part that I want to take issue with is the part that tries to reinforce the status quo and say, yeah, you know, really, teaching is union work. I mean, because once you've paid the toll to get into the system, we're going to do whatever it takes to make you the best teacher because, well, you're a civil servant. That's the part that I have a real problem with, always have had, and that's one reason I ran for this board. So change is in the offing, and this is going to be a part of it, I'm sure. And I think you've done a lot of admirable work here. I really do. Bill and Scott, I think you've done a tremendous amount of work that needs to be recognized. But I also want to recognize the limitations that what it really comes down to is having really good managers in our schools. And in my home district, we have great management, and they'll be able to take this and make it sing because they could take whatever we throw at them. I'm worried about these dysfunctional, more hardscrabble districts that are trying to keep their heads above water, and the complexity of this may indeed overwhelm them. That's my concern. Thank you.
You know, Scott and I talk about this all the time, and Brad as well. We've learned so much in this process. You know, we have some incredible people out there across the state of Kansas, from the smallest to the largest districts. You know, there are little pockets of arrogance and they know everything, and then there are other people who are just extremely appreciative that we're there and we're in there with them. But what's become apparent to us, I think, if I could speak for them to some degree, is that this really isn't a perfect science. But if you have a passion, if you're educating yourself, whatever that may be, if you're working with kids, if you really care, and if we're looking to help somebody improve, what makes sense? What is the evidence? How do we defend the fact that we're doing good work and getting some results? I don't know how to put that in a formula or how to put that in a PowerPoint, you know? I don't know how to do that. But I know that when we go out and we do presentations, and it's during the school day, and we walk through schools, and I walk by that first grader kindergarten classroom and I see what's going on there, my gut just tells me, wow, this is happening in here. You know? This is just, this is where I want my kid. This is incredible. And quite frankly, you go by some others and you have a teacher lecturing and the kids are on their cellphone and they're asleep and they're, you know? Right? I mean, so we're trying to give some semblance of a consistency in getting everybody to that point where they just make your stomach roll because you're so excited about what you've seen, you want to go in there and get on your hands and knees and do the lesson with them.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you. Just leave this.
Thank you.
Good to see you again. Matt Krable to talk about our science standards implementation.
Thank you very much. Let me pull up something real quick. Ready? Okay. Couple of things, just want to keep everybody up to date and make sure that you have opportunities to ask questions. I just wanted to give you sort of the updated version of the Kansas Vision for Science Education. This is a project that's continuing to go on where I've been surveying the field about what their vision is for science education and pulling that information together. And this is a Wordle, which is just a word frequency diagram of what they have responded to about what their vision is for science education in Kansas. And so the bigger the words are, the bigger, the more frequently they're referred to in their responses. But I just want to sort of give that, and you have a few quotes here pulled out from some of those responses. But the reason I bring that up is because everything that we're doing around implementation of these science standards in Kansas is about taking our classrooms and our buildings and our districts and regions and our states and taking them from where they are and trying to move them toward our vision for science education. That's what we're about, that's what we're doing. That's the entire purpose of implementing new standards. It's not to go from teaching this standards document to teaching this standards document. It's to take us from where we are and move us toward our vision for science education. So rather than prescriptively defining that for Kansas science educators, this is a descriptive vision of science education from them, from their responses. Couple of things that we've been doing recently. Of course, I've been going out and working with districts. We had a training of trainers. So we had 40 folks that came in and got some additional training and are now also going out to districts and providing professional learning opportunities for districts. This summer, we have the summer academies. And in the last, so we have one going on right now, which I will head right back to soon as I get done with this. But some of those folks helped us and are leading those sessions at the summer academies. We have sessions there for elementary and middle school and high school focused on science, as well as we have science sessions that are, and there's an integrated sessions for K2 and 3-5. They're all getting little doses of science, and how do you weave that in with other content areas? So we've had, in the neighborhood, in those two summer academies, in the neighborhood of 200 folks that have gotten some additional training around science, about half of those in three days of intensive science, and about half of them, elementary folks that are getting a piece of science and how do they integrate it into all the things that they do on a day-to-day basis. Just a couple of real quick quotes from folks that are replied in the evaluations from those times, just to get a handle on how those are going. Couple from the science, the high school science sessions. "I was surprised by the openness of the new standards, but how they invoke deep thought." "The content of the sessions was fast-paced and highly productive." Here's one from a middle school session. "I loved how our facilitator listened to our concerns and needs and changed her focus to meet those needs. I also loved all the hands-on lab ideas and lesson ideas." A couple from the elementary session. "They, the facilitators, made me excited to teach science. Our facilitators were awesome. They provided us a lot of ideas to use in our classroom, they kept us all engaged, and kept classes fun." So I think those are being a success and reaching out. We obviously have lots more folks that we want to reach out to and continuing to move forward with that. A couple of plans for upcoming things. We're planning, in the planning stages, for a fall curriculum leaders meeting that will focus on math and science. And those folks will then have an opportunity to have a half-day of training because we know these folks do provide these services within their districts already, so we're going to help support them in that process. And we get that solidified, we can pass on that information as well. And we're really trying to facilitate some cross-district conversations. So one of the things that we'll do at that meeting around science is, I've nearly got completed a GIS map, which has a layer for all the districts in Kansas. And then what we're going to do is, as we're thinking about, since these standards are grade-banded in 6 through 8 and 9 through 12, thinking about what does that mean and what's going to happen in people's districts, we're going to ask folks to feed in their new course maps. So we may not all have the same sequences, 6, 8, and 9, 12, but if District A wants to find another district that has the same course sequence so they can collaborate, they'll be able to do that easily through that map. And we're going to start in the fall, I'm going to start doing some regular webinars around a variety of topics around science education. Other things that are upcoming, we had some, you know, talk about this morning about assessments, sort of the general plan again, which I've talked about before, but just as a reminder, what we're planning on currently is in the 14, 15 school years for this upcoming one, we're reducing the scope of the assessment. We've had surveys out to the field for them to look at our tested indicators from our old standards and to select the ones that are most strongly connected to our new standards. And we're going to reduce the scope of the assessment to one session at 4, 7, and high school to facilitate teachers moving forward and doing things differently in the classroom and not feeling overly tied to our retired standards. And we'll be looking at piloting items that are more developed targeting our new standards. We've just shifted, as you know, into a new fiscal year, so CETE now has it in their contract to work on the development around the science assessment, and we'll be doing more concrete things around that soon. The plan then is to retire the old assessment after next year and move toward sort of more broad pilot of items the following year, with hopefully being able to have a full summative assessment in place in 16, 17. We're also continuing to find ways and to investigate ways of helping support teachers gather better information about where their students' understanding of science is on a sort of a day-to-day basis. So looking at ways to support formative process in the classroom so that teachers can make instructional decisions based on that. And so those are sort of the pieces. We're not just working on summative, but we're trying to find ways to work on formative process as well. And I'll just stop there. I know we're short on time and catching back up and take any questions that folks have at this point in time, or any ideas of future work. I would also add, actually, I did notice that there's one of the states that has also adopted these standards that has decided that they're not going to move forward with having an assessment next year. So it's a sort of an interesting idea to put forward. Kentucky has put that out there. So anyway, those are just sort of the brief updates, and again, take questions.
Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the concerns that I've heard relative to, that makes sense to some degree, is the next-generation science standards has to do with, we're eliminating biology and chemistry and physics. And are we eliminating biology, chemistry, and physics?
The decisions about course sequences and what courses they have are completely local decision. I have heard folks thinking carefully about whether or not those courses are actually meeting the needs of their students and whether or not they're actually preparing their students for the future. There's nothing that comes from us that says you have this course or don't have that course. But locally, they may be having that conversation and saying, well, maybe the sequence of biology, chemistry, and physics doesn't actually represent where science is going right now.
Where'd that sequence come from?
It came from the late 1800s.
Oh.
A committee of 10 folks who sort of sat down and decided that that was what the sequence was going to be.
Alphabetical order?
There you go.
All right. Well, actually, I've heard that story too. You know, that it's over 125 years ago that we basically made this decision. So reviewing them is a good thing, but regrettably, there is some, there is, the next-generation science standards do not tell you the course sequence. They do not identify courses. They identify standards. Now, where you, as a district, teach those is your decision in the state of Kansas.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. And actually, that's the case with our previous standards as well.
Exactly.
Standards don't develop, don't determine courses. And the reason that they're grade-banded instead of grade-specific is there actually isn't good science education research to say that this is what the order they should be in and this is the way that it works perfectly. What I think that the research does show is what's really important is to have a K-12 conversation in your district to pull those folks together so that everybody knows what everybody's doing, because you can't build on what happens in 7th grade if you don't know what happened in 6th grade. And when teachers do that and have great conversations, then you see good gains for students.
Okay. And so there is a conversation about that, but again, it's a local decision. Next-generation science standards doesn't tell you when to teach it. You know, basically it says, here's the standards we should be teaching, and here's the progression it should be.
There's an appendix that supports that decision-making process.
Right.
But there's nothing that we dictate about what courses are.
And quickly, you've gotten some very positive feedback from early adopters in your sessions and around the state. One of my concerns originally was related to elementary schools, not because they're not teaching science, because they all do and they can all demonstrate that, but are they, are they teaching the standards at the time in a place that is a district you want that to be done? I'd be interested to find out, as we go along with the implementation, how the elementary schools are in fact utilizing and implementing the next-generation science standards in their districts. I've had some good conversations with elementary teachers, you know, in informal sessions that have been eye-opening as well as, in terms of, they're actually kind of in favor of it. But at the same time, they're hesitant because this is a new accountability, and we're asking people who haven't necessarily made science, put science at the forefront, to now put it at the forefront.
And the great thing about, I think, where these standards are is they actually work much better with all of our other content area standards. And so when we're having conversations with the elementary teachers, they can see those connections because they teach all of those content areas. And it's actually easier, I think, to make those connections with these standards than with any other standards we have before. I would also add that I know that Paul Adams has a, Fort Hays State University had a grant project that he's working specifically with elementary teachers in western Kansas, and we're hoping to utilize some of that piece to then roll into...
Paul, that's a great job.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Matt, I know that there was discussion about involving business and industry and local communities as these standards are being implemented. Could you tell us what's happened with that?
Sure. We're continuing to figure out ways. We're working on a strategic communication plan. I've been working with McNeese on how do we sort of, again, the idea here is not that we're doing the standards, but it's that how do we support and build our capacity as a state to support science education? So we're just sort of at the beginning stages of thinking about developing what some of those messages are and bringing those partnerships together. Because teachers in the classroom, you know, some of those leaders that we have in that training of trainers are informal science educators from Kansas. So there are zoo educators, there are museum educators. We're bringing those folks to the table and having conversations. The after-school network, so the Kansas Enrichment Network, which pulls together, Marcia DeVorek at KU is the person who sort of coordinates that, and they pull together, you know, people in the Girl Scouts and Boys and Girls Clubs and all those folks, and they have a STEM initiative that they're working on. And the cool thing about that is now all of those groups are talking to each other and they're sharing ideas and they're figuring out, okay, it's less about who is in my area and fighting for turf for students, and more about how do we sort of work together to make better things happen. You work on this area, I'll work on this area, they'll be complementary. So we're having a lot of those conversations across the state, and we're trying to sort of build that momentum to really support science education.
Thank you. Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Matt. On your graphic, the word student or students was very large and science was very large, and I don't know where teachers appeared, but if they were on there, it was small. And I like that because it's more about students than it is teachers. Very quickly, I want to de-emphasize testing. I mean, officially, I'm coming out against Common Core because of the testing component. So in the great ledger of things, I'm coming out against Common Core officially, I guess, because of the testing component. Now, I know we're going to have standardized testing, but I just want to push for the joy in the classroom, the joy, the sheer joy of people who are enthusiastic about science. If we can welcome these people more, we'll have a better product than service. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments for Matt? Well, it's good to see you again. I know a lot of good things are happening, and we appreciate your updates.
Well, I thank you so much, Jenna as Chair and the rest of the board, for the opportunities to come and talk to you. It's a privilege that a lot of my colleagues in other states don't get, and I don't take that for granted. So I really appreciate having the chance to come and talk to you. And if people have questions or concerns, please don't hesitate through Brad to get them to me, and I'll be happy to address those. So thank you.
And we will take a 15-minute break. No, how about a 10-minute break? 10 minutes enough? A 10-minute break and reconvene at 20 till 11:00. Well, it appears that our board members are in the room, so we will continue with our next item on the agenda, and that is to discuss the 2015 NASB membership dues. And we will likely have... A 10-minute break and reconvene at 20 till 11:00. Well, it appears that our board members are in the room, so we will continue with our next item on the agenda, and that is to discuss the 2015 NASB membership dues. And we will likely have the president-elect of NASB as one of our board members. Isn't that correct? What?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to be sure I said it right.
Haven't heard any news lately, but you know, God knows what'll go on and happen, you know. Ken and I and Steve and Carolyn and, you know, we're all participating with, directly with NASB.
I would direct your attention to our budget expense report, and we were showing a negative balance of $6,600 for last year, just for your information. NASB dues are a large part of our expenses. I don't know how that will all play out next year, starting with a negative balance, but I think it's something we will, well, you will all need to look at carefully as you proceed ahead, travel expenses and staying within budget. Now, we will, is there discussion about this before we have a motion to approve?
Well, one thing I'd say is, is the finances in terms of what NASB is paying in terms of transportation and housing, you know, is, their financial status is 100% enhanced from what it was two years ago. You know, so they have completely committed to, you know, our travel and all our expenses.
So are you saying that they pay for the travel of all the people you mentioned?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah, well, oh, sorry, board members, yes.
Do they pay for your travel? Do they pay for Steve's travel? No. Jim's travel?
Yeah, for Jim and Ken, yes.
Okay. So Carolyn Campbell.
Madam Chair, I think it would look a little strange if we did not pay our dues and be members because we have the president-elect in our state.
Well, certainly.
And so I move that, and I do appreciate all that I have learned from NASB, and so I move that we authorize the dues for this coming year.
It's moved by Carolyn Campbell, seconded by Deana Horst, and I want to say, I wasn't trying to throw a wet blanket. I was trying to present the whole picture because this is part of that picture. So moving forward, I think there needs to be an awareness of the fact that we are financially constrained to a point, and we all need, will need to be aware of that. Okay. So it's moved and seconded that we approve the dues in the amount of $24,985 for the next year to NASB. Is there further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Thank you. We have a 9-0 vote on that. We're ready for board reports, and I will begin with the chairman's report. Wanted to give you an update on the commissioner search. K S D E staff will have opportunities to visit with Mr. Lauer and Schuler from McPherson and Jacobson on July 22nd and 23rd. Hourly sessions have been scheduled in the boardroom. So that was something we strongly suggested, and we're glad that they're moving ahead with that part of our input process. An issue that came up after Peggy sent out the email listing the qualifications was that in communicating with Dr. Christman, there was some confusion about how we were going to list the doctorate degree. And we need to confirm proper wording on that qualification. I had thought in our conversation that we had indicated we wanted that to be listed as a preferred requirement, but Dr. Christman understood from the conversation that we wanted it listed required instead of preferred. So he wanted a clarification on that from us. And I think in the discussion, my understanding was we thought that would be a very valid requirement, but in some instances, there might be somebody that was working on that degree, or there might be some wonderful candidate that came to the top that hadn't completed it. So I need your input on that so we can let them know. Are there thoughts? Kathy Bush.
I would prefer preferred.
And that was my understanding when we left the meeting. I'm seeing head nods. Are there any that are going to go like this?
I would prefer preferred.
Okay. Is that, Janet? What do you think, John? Okay. Sally? Okay.
Wait a minute. You didn't, you were.
I thought I saw your head.
No, no, you didn't.
Okay, Carolyn.
Required.
I think she wants it.
Okay.
I want required.
Deana, was your head nodding in the affirmative?
And let me just clarify that I understand that if there is someone that is working on it, on their doctorate, that would be, you know, different, but I feel like, strongly feel it should be required.
Well, I think we all feel that that is an important part of the picture, but I have eight folks here who have thought that preferred is a strong enough language, so that doesn't eliminate your position.
And I understand majority rules, but my opinion is what I'm standing by.
Well, thank you. So Peggy, you have our preference on that. Just a reminder, there will be a special board meeting. We've scheduled that for Wednesday, October 29th at 9:00 a.m. to noon for the presentation of applications after the vetting and reference check process are completed. Peggy had sent us an email about that. Have you received confirmation from all board members about their availability that day?
I have visited with everybody now, yes, and the 29th is good.
Okay, good.
And he said, expect probably three hours because you'll not only receive the short list, but all the list. At that point, you know, you'll make your determination on who to interview.
All right. So we're moving forward with that. We do need to appoint our board represent. 9:00 to noon. Sally Cobble.
You know, when we make it 9:00 to noon, I have to drive in the night before. But if we schedule things like at 1:30 to 5:00, I can come in and not have to spend the night and drive back again. So as we start thinking about costs, I just want you to know that as we schedule things 9:00 in the morning, that forces me to come in the night before and have a motel expense.
Peggy, there was a reason we did that.
I think it was you, Janet. I think it was your schedule that you said morning would be best.
And that's okay. I mean, I'm just, I'm just going out there.
Well, okay.
And that's okay. I'm just.
But we've already confirmed it with our presenters.
But then in the future, we'll sure ask and see if it's adaptable.
We might keep that. If, you know, we need to watch this travel expense, I'm a good portion of that, and so.
Well, my thinking was, I don't like to drive at night, so that.
That's okay.
You know, the afternoon, late afternoon meetings create that situation for some of us, so there's always some other thing to consider. Thank you. We do need to officially appoint board representatives to the Innovative District Coalition Board, and it would be my suggestion, since Jim McNeese and Deana Horst have done such good work so far, that we officially appoint them as the state board's representatives. Would I hear a motion to that effect? Moved by Kathy Bush, seconded by Sally Cobble. Is there discussion? Janet Woff.
I just have a question. Is this, will this be a continuing position like we do everything? I was just curious.
Yeah. I don't recall what the bylaws said about terms. Are they two-year terms, four-year terms? What'd you say? I didn't hear what you said, Deana.
They're just appointed by the board. There's no, no terms mentioned. So that's, if that's something you'd like for us to include, we could do that, whether it be a two-year.
I think that's an issue that is.
Two-year term or.
Need to be addressed.
A year, a year term.
Well, you know.
Or yearly appointed.
The, the way we traditionally work in most cases is two-year terms that are appointed when there's a turnover in leadership on the board, and that would fit in nicely with our schedule. So I do think that's something that should be addressed because if it isn't, then it will always be, well, okay, is this person on it forever? So.
We can, we can fix that.
Okay. Good question. Sally Cobble.
I'd like to see this appointment be until appointments are made with another set of leaders on the board, because like this wouldn't be a full two-year term, but if we could do this with the understanding that in January, when we have a new set of leaders, then we might, so it gets on the same cycle as everything else.
Okay. Is that acceptable to everyone? Carolyn Campbell.
Yeah, and I was just thinking before Sally spoke that maybe for this first appointment, we should make it, because I was thinking in terms of there might, there will be leadership change in January, to make this one for the two, it would be like till the next cycle. Was that 2017? Because these two have been working, so, and just to make it clear that they'll have it for this, till January of 2017, wouldn't that be? And, but then in the future, for in the bylaws, laws, that it would be.
To every time there was a leadership change.
And we can, we could write it in the bylaws in that manner, and then a component of it will just sort of can be removed.
In the initial appointment.
So who made this motion? Kathy made the motion. Kathy.
I would move that we appoint Deana and Jim to be coalition board members for the rest of this year and the following two-year term.
Okay. And who seconded the motion? Is that change acceptable? Okay. So we have clarity now in what we're going to vote on. All in favor, raise your right hand. Is your hand up? All opposed? Okay. So we had eight in favor, one in opposition. And I think next we will hear from our board attorney. Board attorney report is next on the list.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was asked to pass along an update on the status of regulations from Scott's office. The temporary regulations adopted in response to Senate Bill 2506 were approved by the Rules and Regulations Committee and now are in effect. The agency is scheduled for a July 14th meeting with the Rules and Regulations Committee to address the fingerprinting regulations and to address most of the other licensure regulations that have been modified. Say most because the office is still waiting on a couple of the regulations to be approved by the Attorney General, but for the most part, most of those will be next up before the Rules and Regs Committee on July 14th. The fingerprinting regulation and the permanent version of the temporary licensure regulations are set for public hearing during the September board meeting, which would be the next, the next step in that, in that approval process. So that's an update on the status of the various regulations. So they appear to be moving on schedule.
Kathy Bush has a question about that.
The public hearing, will that be for the regulations that we just approved as a result of legislative action, or will that be for the regulations that we approved as far as action of this board?
That would be the first of the ones that we approved. After they go through the entire process and are approved by those various agencies, they come out for a public hearing here before the board.
As a result of the legislative action, 2506?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other ones, the public hearing would be later because those are still in process?
I think that's, I think that's true. That's, I don't have another date for those.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that in my own mind.
In my, in the, in the past experience, those public hearings are just a matter for anybody to come forward and, and are a matter of course, but have not had a lot, a lot of discussion at that point because it's so near the end of the process. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Are you talking about the reg licensure, reg changes that the board voted on? Because those two, what the board did and what the statute did, those were combined into what we call the temporary, so they would be one in the same.
Okay. I just think there's confusion by the public because there's a lot of those regulations the board did not initiate. They were legislatively initiated. We went through the process and approved them.
Right.
There are some regulations that we initiated.
Correct. But those two were combined into one set of regs that are now going to public comment. Those were the ones that the board at the special meeting approved that were working as temporary regs. They're, they're one in the same.
But point of clarification, when you say that the legislature initiated the regs, you mean that we, we changed the regulations to match the legislative changes? The legislature didn't change those regs. We just did so as a reaction to the, to the statute changes so that our regs were consistent with the statute.
Our regs then complied with the statute.
Correct. So, but, but where we had dual or parallel tracks were that in order to timely comply with those changes in the legislative, the effective date of the legislative changes to the statute, we had the temporary regs, which would be fast-tracked so that we could accept those changes in applications, and then we had the permanent regs. So those were going forward on parallel paths. So those were going forward on parallel paths.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have any other substantive updates unless you have questions.
Well, of course, we want you to have a crystal ball and tell us when we're going to hear from the Supreme Court.
They took, the hearing, I did attend the hearing. They, and, and the, they said they'd take it under advisement, so...
And your crystal ball says?
It's a little...
Question mark.
It's question mark.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any legislative reports? I doubt it. Okay. Ken's gone, and Deana, things are kind of quiet right now.
They're, at least they're quiet from our point.
Right.
I'm all in.
Board committees, Janet, the policy committee's not bringing anything forward?
No, the policy committee has done an outstanding job.
Well, we want to thank you again.
And they do not want to meet anymore.
Okay.
They've done a wonderful job. Thank you.
What about Communications Committee? Is there, are there any updates from...
Thank you. In your packets, you'll see you have your bio that is on your website.
I wondered about that.
And if you would like to have any changes made to that, updates, or information that you'd like to add, or anything, you know, now's the time, it'd be a good time to do it. Peggy's asked for that.
We would just let Peggy know, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Don't let me know.
All right.
Peggy needs to know. We'll be providing a, a more extensive report in August. And at, at that time, we'd also like to hear back from you, or before, on any of the activities that we did during the past year. If there's suggestions, upgrades, you know, that, that you have, comments, please send them to Peggy, and we'll review them. Second, we are looking at some of the, the events that we had last year. For instance, we met with, a joint meeting with the, the House and Senate Ed Committees, the postcards that we did, and some of the other things. If you have any recommendations or suggestions, we are anticipating doing the postcard campaign again, and are thinking of those things, like our, our honorees yesterday that we had that were just terrific. What a bright stars they are. And so we, we've got a lot to celebrate yet, so we're, we're, we're no lack of cards going out, you know? So any, your cards and letters and information would be appreciated. Thank you.
And I wanted to express appreciation to both of you for the active role you're, you've taken this year, and for the positive message that's been put out there about our board. I think that's very, very important and appreciated. Well, then, we will go to our board reports, and I think I started there last time, so we'll start with Kathy Bush.
I don't have anything.
Mr. McNeese.
Um, no. No reports.
Really?
Really.
Okay. Deana Horst.
And I have no report that you haven't already heard.
Carolyn Campbell.
I forgot to bring some handouts. I will have those next month. But I did attend the National Federation of High School Activities, and went to like the legal sessions, I always go there to see what. But I also went to the, there was one about sudden deaths. And the wonderful thing that I heard, the doctor for the National Federation said that in the last school year, there were no deaths, heat stroke deaths at all. And so I think maybe our coaches and our districts are getting the message, and this is across the country, but there were like, and then he talked about, there were like 20 cardiac deaths of our children. And then there was 25 accidental. But the main thing that I was so happy to hear, that these heat stroke deaths, I think we sort of have that under control now.
Good.
So I'll bring, I had some handouts and things, and I just forgot them this morning.
Okay. Thank you. I did want to report on the meeting of the KACCTE, Kansas Career Advisory Committee for, Kansas Advisory Committee for Career and Technical Education. That is always a mouthful. But if you'll remember, we as a board in 2007 approved the structure that included career pathways. And it's taken several years for that to really become an active component in what we're doing. This committee is important, because it includes people from business and industry. They provide input into the development of the, the courses of study that align with the different pathways. And so this group now is in the second approval process for courses of study. And they put a lot of time and work into reviewing what is working and what might need to be changed. So at the meeting on June 16, we heard a presentation on the new health pathway. It will be presented to teachers at the KACT conference at the end of July. And the KACCTE did approve that contingent on the approval from that, that meeting. The business and finance pathway was reviewed, and changes to that were approved. The architecture and construction career design pathway was also reviewed and approved. The education and training career cluster presented an update. This is some, this is a new development and course of study for that area. And the, they, we did approve the course competency at the introductory level. There are two or three different levels, but at least at that level, that's been developed and approved. And then the STEM cluster pathway presented revisions to their courses of study, and those were approved. So this is a important effort, and I am really pleased to report to you that that process is working well. And we should appreciate all those people from business and industry that are participating in that, providing input, so we know that the courses of study are relevant to what students need to know when they get out into the workplace. Sally Cobble.
I have a long enough report to make up for everybody that did not give a report. I could do that long on the report from Education Commission of the States. I'm going to give you a brief summary, and then I hope to, excuse me, I hope to really write this report up and send you more in detail for you to read at your convenience, because it could be a long report if I didn't do that. First of all, the Education of the States, ECS, is an organization that started in 1965. And it was started by the governors, the chairman of the Senate and Education Committees of each state, the state school board, somebody representing the, like in our state, it would be the Board of Regents. And then, I think it provides either for two or three more appointments. And the governor has to agree for all of these people to go. Now, the state, and it, it became in statute in the state of Kansas about that same time, that we pay dues and participate in ECS. However, our state has not been paying for the last, I know, four years, maybe longer, because I've represented you on that, and because we have not had dues paid, they have been graciously paying my way, this, this group. So, and I have picked up a lot of information from this group, so I really appreciated it. The, this year, their membership has returned after the recession. And so one of the things that I would like to propose, when we do our legislative, other things besides budget, you know, our budget, is that maybe we encourage the legislature to once again pay dues in ECS. Because they are an organization that does a lot of the research for us in other projects. We can go on to that site and find research for just about anything that we're making decisions for. And it is a, and it's based on policy. And so it's a good reference for us to use as a local board. It would be a good reference for legislators to use when they want research-based information. The conference this year had the second largest in attendance, and it also includes the Teacher of the Year. So every state's Teacher of the Year goes to this conference. And this year, it was a little different than how they'd organized in the years past. We met more often with the Teachers of the Year. It wasn't as separate as Teacher of the Year goes to these sessions, and the rest of us went to these. So it was very interesting to be in the sessions in which the Teachers of the Year asked questions, too. And it gave, it gave you a whole different perspective of just policymakers. So who represented us from this state this year was Jeff Baxter, and Frank Henderson and I were there. They gave us time to collaborate as a state. So if, if we were really operating in the manner in which it was designed, and everybody attended that should attend this, it would have been a great time to collaborate and to understand where everybody was coming from. Also, everybody would have understood the trends and what's going on across the nation. And it's one of those meetings, it's a little bit like NASB, Jim. When you go, you either get affirmed in what we are doing, or sometimes it's, oh my gosh, we're so much ahead of what everybody else is doing. We should be the presenters. And they have some awards that they give, too. And one of them is on, you know, what is your state doing different from a lot of the other, the other states? And as I listened, our accountability and our, how we're going to accredit schools is a pretty innovative idea. And I'm not so sure that we shouldn't enter it in one of these awards that's coming, that will be next year. Or maybe we ought to offer to do a workshop, because we are doing things different. One of the panels that I was able to go to, I listened to Texas, Kentucky, can't remember the other two states, to be quite honest, that were, was on the panel, and I ran into Alexa, and she went with me. And hearing about how different people have worked with the Common Core, and why some states didn't, and why some did. And all of that misinformation that is out there about Common Core. You know, if you listen to the presenters of Texas, if you listen to the presenters of, what, maybe another state that pulled out, they said they pulled out a Common Core, they didn't really do that. They have Kansas and college career-ready standards. Some of them already met. In Texas, what they're having trouble with is they had 15 different tests that they were having. Now, talk about the relationship of Common Core being tied to a test over and over and over. Well, that is coming out of Texas. And if I was in Texas, I would be worried. But, you know, that's not how it's happening in Kansas. And so we got to make sure that people understand what's happening in Kansas is not necessarily what's happening in other parts. I wished we would have been part of that panel. I think that maybe we could have shown the right way of making decisions on standards. It would have been very effective. But what are, what were all the topics I got to listen to? I got to hear a panel on the future of higher education, and how K-12 in different states, you know, are aligned. We were, again, looking very good in what I heard on that. The trends in districts and the, and schools accountability, we're far ahead of districts. Jim, you always come up with the idea of, well, is anything that we're doing really making our schools better? Is our accountability system making it better? Our keep, is it, is it helping make us better? And, yes, I, after listening to the others, we, we have a different purpose, and, and we have a different thinking than a lot of states. Oh, the one on the adolescent body clocks and educational times, he only talked for six minutes, but that was a fantastic, and I will write that one up and send it to you. Basically, on that one, it's your, your high schools, maybe some of your junior, your middle schools and junior highs, they should maybe be starting later in the day if they really want to get the best out of the students. And it, it was very interesting. I will make sure that I write that part up. School safety in the post-Sandy Hook world does look different. One of the comments from that session was how many drills our schools do in a year? And the number in some schools were up to maybe 30 or more. I mean, I was just amazed. And so some schools, they, they are so overwhelmed with how many drills that they do, they have, that on the last day of school, they just do every drill. That's part of their year-end. Well, I don't think that was the purpose of these drills. But it did make me think that I wondered how many drills we are expecting in the state, and, which might be something nice you might want to include in your Friday letter, just for our information. How many drills do we require in the state of Kansas for our schools? How many times do they have to perform those schools? You know, some schools were doing tornado drills when they should be doing hurricane drills, you know? And why in the state of Kansas would we be doing hurricane drills, where, you know? And so I had a, somebody that was being checked for, well, they had a daycare in their home. They had to post a hurricane procedure in western Kansas. Now, really? I mean, you know, so we need to make sure that we're not doing some of the same things as that. Then we had a speaker on the 60 years since Brown versus Brown of education, which was interesting. Then there was a governor's panel of only governors were on the panel, and what they were doing in civic education and in early childhood, and the movement through the, the U.S. on these governors, on how much they believe in early childhood. on these governors, on how much they believe in early childhood and in kindergarten all day. It's quite initiative by the Governors Association on this. And in one breakout session on this, one gentleman said, "Well, you know, the statistics prove that early childhood doesn't help anything past third grade." Well, you know, our initiative up to third grade is to teach children to read, and the statistics and the information show that early childhood helps in that teaching, because after third grade, they use their reading to learn. And it was amazing on how many people in that, that group I was in never knew the difference. But in some of these states that are deciding that you can't go on from third grade, you know, we better make sure those schools, those, those states have preschool, because that's when it's really going to matter. Let's see, I keep getting a thing popping up on my dial. Then there, we heard the National Teacher of the Year, Jeffrey, you think I butcher your last name?
Charbonneau.
Thank you. Charbonneau.
He's Speaker of the Conference.
Okay, he will be, oh, that's excellent. In, in California, he really talked about education is the only place that state dollars are really invested back into the state, that everything in a budget of a state up into then is consumable. And so, if you want to really think like a business, you have consumable, and then you have reinvesting. And so, if your state budget is a higher percentage for education, then that state is having the luxury of investment back, because that's where your workforce comes from. That's, and, and he talked about it as investment. And one of the things he said, I just laughed out loud on, because it hit my funny bone, I guess, as a, as an owner, as a previous owner of a small business. When you put money into something and you know you're underfunding it, but you get these enormous growths and success from that small investment, do you decide to cut that more? Or do you decide, wait a minute, that's where I want to invest more? Because that's going to help me gain more. And so, as we look at the money in the state of Kansas, we are doing a great job with what we've been given, and we have shown great success. So, if we really want to think like a business person, do we keep cutting that? Or do we invest in that portion more to gain success? So, as we start, and they keep thinking that education needs to think like a business, well, maybe we need to think like a business all the way. And so, he challenged us in our thinking. Then there was ensuring quality in flipped classrooms. I want to know, do we all know what a flipped classroom is? Well, I'm not getting much out of that. But a flipped classroom is where a teacher might send homework home of maybe them talking and, and teaching the basics, but when the kids come to school, that's when they do the homework. Because sometimes, you know, we give the instruction and then we send the homework home, well, many times, the parents can't help that child at home. So, if the instruction level is done in the, if the homework is done in the classroom, then the teacher really knows who needs help and who doesn't, and can provide another level of instruction. And so, I just found that interesting on that. Let's see. And the closing session was from the Department of Education by Ted Mitchell, and it was talking about a lot of grants that they hope to make available next year. Then, on the breakout sessions, extending the reach to your best teachers, I intended, I attended that one. I attended a highly qualified versus highly effective teacher prep program. And Brad, as I was sitting in that, I realized that this board approves the teacher prep programs. But, you know, I really don't know what we ask of those career, ask of those schools of education. Do we give them standards that they have to include, and they can then develop any classes around them, like our next-generation science standards that, that Jim was talking about? Or do we ask for specific classes? And I thought maybe if, maybe the rest of the board might want that information also, and that maybe that would be a good discussion for the council with Kathy and I on the, so we really know what's out there and, and in these different colleges.
So, are you requesting that as a future agenda item?
I, I think so. Well, that depends on the rest of the board. I would like to know more about that, and I'm not getting any shaking of heads by anybody, but.
I can get some stuff pulled together and send out to you on Friday.
And then, if we want something else, okay. Then the, just how the, then I attended a session on traditional to competency, changing the classroom, and why science matters in early years. You know, those early years, preschool and kindergarten, or those little minds are so curious, so very curious, and that's all part of science investigation, and, and so, that was interesting. Frank went to dual enrollment. In my, my district, dual enrollment is very popular, and we have more schools doing dual enrollment than AP. He is the opposite in the district that he is a, is a board member. AP is more prevalent than dual. And so, that, he enjoyed going to that. He went to making the most of a high school senior year, getting kids ready to read by third grade, there it is again, and you flipped your classrooms, now what? It was excellent. It's the best conference I've been to since I was on the state board. And it, it really helped with some professional development. Now, the other meetings, I've gone for four years for, they may have been good, but maybe my level of competency as a board member is better, so I understood some of these things better. I don't know, but I, I just found it interesting. And I had people coming up from Utah and Washington State, wanting to know what we were doing about this or doing about that, and it was a great collaborative time. And I got to then ask them to. Kentucky's doing a lot of, they're, they're kind of like we are. They're moving that big ship around, and what are we doing and what are they doing? And so, they're interesting to talk to. And North Carolina has a lot of interesting things, and, and they have the answers. So, that was said a little tongue-in-cheek. So, but anyway, and it was, it was interesting. So, thank you. I'm sorry it was so lengthy, but it was a great conference.
Thank you. Janet Wall.
I'll pass.
John Bacon. Steve Roberts.
Ralph Beecham is, has stepped down from leading the Professional Standards Board and gone on to retirement, so good wishes to Ralph Beecham, and that's really all I have.
Are there requests for future agenda items? All right, then we need to act on board member travel. Do I hear a motion to approve board member travel? You have the list in your packet.
Sorry.
Moved by Sally Cobble. Is there a second? Seconded by Jim McNeese. Is there discussion? Carolyn Campbell.
Yes, we received this invitation yesterday. I would like to add the 2014 Summer Leadership Conference, TASM.
Other changes before we vote? So, we'll, we will be voting to approve travel, including that addition. All in favor, raise your right hand. I see nine hands, so that's a unanimous vote. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. Thank you for a very productive two days of our meetings. Appreciate all of you. We are adjourned.